Good evening and welcome to this regular session of Lawrence County Council for September eighth, two thousand and twenty five. We'll start with our invocation by Vice Chairman Brownlee, followed by the pledgery.
Day of the Father, oh, we thank you for today and your great gift. Please bless this council's made decisions on this county and may every decision go to benefit the citizens of this county. Bless this council, our county, and all those people that call it home in your heavenly name. We pray. Amen.
Pleasure to be here today.
All right. Welcome, everybody here in person and online. We'll start with the approvals of our agenda for September eighth. I will entertain a motion when you're ready. Second, any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Everybody, raise your hand. Seven zero. Thank you. Next item is approval minutes. We have a cadre of minutes. We have five separate meetings on August eleventh, two thousand and twenty five regular session, an August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five executive session, an August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five public input session, September third called executive session, and September fourth called executive session.
Make motion that we approve the August eleventh regular session, August eighteenth executive session, August eighteenth public input session, September third exec- executive session, and the September fourth executive session.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving big minutes, please raise your hand. Seven zero. Under special recognitions, I don't believe administration has anything for us this evening under special recognitions, but I do have something that came before us this evening that is of great honor. The record, our chief, Greg Lindley, received this letter from the Ori County Fire and Rescue. Says on March fifth, two thousand and twenty five, Ori County Rescue responded to a catastrophic wildland fire that tested their community and resources. And thanks to the dedication, professionalism, and selfless service of your department, that will be Lawrence County Fire, along with many other mutual aid partners, we were able to bring the incident under control and protect lives and property. Enclosed is a copy of resolution that was adopted by the Ori County Council recognizing the March first, two thousand and twenty five wildland fire response and those agencies that answered the call to assist. Accept this as our sincere thanks for your partnership and support. And so what we have is a copy of their resolution that they passed for Ori County for our firefighters who went and helped with that wildland fire. So. Great. You're in. Great. Thank you. Reports to council.
Yes, sir. Good evening, council. Council received a special appropriation grant applications last week and are currently reviewing those applications. As such, council is currently actively reviewing those applications. Our request for council to determine an appropriate date and time to discuss and review these.
So council, we we have talked about looking at these in a meeting and I think we talked about Monday, the fifteenth as a possible date. How does everybody, a week from today, how does that work with everybody's schedule?
Would you say August fifth, I mean?
Oh, September next Monday.
What time?
I would say six P M. It's the nonprofit applications. That's correct. Yes, sir. Same the word. Okay, so we will shoot for Monday, the fifteenth of September, six P M. To discuss the special purpose. Oh, right here.
All right. And up next, we have Ms. Courtney Donnell. She is from the Keith Lawrence County Beautiful Board, and she has an update for us.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you for allowing me to come tonight and report to y'all. Um, so for those who do not know who I am, I'm, it's been a while since I've been in the council meeting to speak and give updates. I'm the Keith Lawrence County Beautiful affiliate coordinator. I've I've brought today a two thousand and twenty five litter index, and I'm not going to take up a lot of your time to explain it. Inside the folder, you'll see the packet. And what this is, it's a way of us scoring our roads and deciding where our heavy littered areas are, which ones aren't as bad. Uh, this started in two thousand and twenty one before I was on board. Um, that's when they kind of came together to create an affiliate of People America Beautiful. And you can kind of see that our score that went down tremendously from two thousand and twenty one. We started off with a three point one and we we went from two point three to two point four within the last year. But one of the things I've been working on in my time as um a coordinator for for this is collecting the data and having numbers so that when we go to apply for grants and getting money, we have all this information on hand. Um, and one thing you can see throughout this, I have divided everything up. It's in separate districts. Um, and you can even see the district by which road. And so what this does is kind of tells us what areas throughout the county that we really need to focus on and where to put our resources to. And again, I'm not going to take up a lot of your time. If anybody has any questions about that, do not hesitate to reach out to me and let me know, and we can sit down and talk about that and um, any kind of forum that works for y'all. I also gave a, it's a two thousand and twenty five mid-year volunteer report. Um, and again, like I said, I've kind of spent a lot of time collecting data so we can kind of have a number and the values on what um what our volunteers are doing. I have it divided up between three different categories, being Keith Lawrence County Beautiful, adopt the highway and the independent group that they may not be an adopt the highway group, but they come to me and get supplies and report their numbers. One of the things I'd like to highlight that even through, this goes through June, that we have reported almost the same amount of trash that we picked up last year in just half a year this year. That's not saying maybe, that's not saying there's more trash being picked up now, but more of people being aware and reporting it back to me. Um, you can definite- definitely see on there where April was our big month, and that's where we really push our Earth Day cleanups. So um, that clearly, we're definitely getting the information out there. People are catching on and getting involved. And you can see with the the volunteer impacts that that comes out to be a little over thirteen thousand just in volunteer volunteer time. If you were going to pay somebody to do these cleanups, that would, that's the money value on it. Um, the other thing I included for anyone that may not know all the different projects that we've had going on over the last year, I did include a two thousand and twenty four annual report in there. That's just got a um, just a few of the big major projects that we've had going on over the last year and hope to continue growing with y'all's support. Um, so again, I just want to take the time to thank y'all for allowing me to be here and um continuing to support Keep Lawrence County Beautiful. Does anybody have any questions about all of that information I just kind of threw at you?
How do you arrive at the litter index?
So what the, so what it is, is I pick the the past two years, it, the two thousand and twenty one was a group, Chris Martin had a few volunteers. They went around and you divide the county up into the five districts, and it's from the one through four um range, and the roads were randomly picked throughout the county and each of the different municipalities. Um, this year we had four volunteers and it it was two days worth of driving from one side of the county to the other, scoring the road. That, was that your question?
Right. I have one. Everybody do. You get back, get away from me. I see the kind of catch your budget from forty thousand dollars this year to five thousand dollars. So how you live off of that?
Um, I went out in the community and I worked really hard to gain more um community partnerships. There are um, like P R T C and uh Lawrence County Water and Sewer and them types, um, looking into more grant money as well as the Chamber of Support.
So how, why y'all care to put down forty thousand or five thousand? Tell me. And y'all always said keep Lawrence County first, and you ain't keep Lawrence County first. But we go out here and spend forty five thousand dollars to hire somebody. So show me the difference. Keep Lawrence County first. And that's an outside fund that we gave, gonna give forty five thousand dollars for. So that money came from somewhere to pay the organization. So why we can't give forty thousand dollars, they gonna do something for Lawrence County.
Okay, I'm not sure where you're going with that, but that is.
Well, I'm just letting you know. I know about.
Okay.
I do appreciate the support.
Thank you, man.
That's through um S D D O T. And they um put the sign up for you. I can provide all the cleanup supplies and all that. Do what?
If they had an interest, they just call you.
And I can, I can connect them with the correct person. Yes, sir. Absolutely. All right. Yes, yeah.
I see that you put in for this uh nonprofit grant application.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I would make sure. I would make sure you get full amount that need to be adopted to you. I can't sell body above six, but I could show myself out me.
All right, thank you. We are at public comment time. Uh, the first job is Chief Dexter Sharp related to nonprofit support.
Thank you for letting me be here. Uh, I drove all the way up here today just to thank you for the money that you gave us towards our powwow between the council and Andy M. Shore was involved in it some, and I appreciate that. And I'd like, I'd like to thank the sheriff, too. Well, a while back, we had a uh some incidents at the tribal grounds, and we called for a meeting for the sheriff, and he came down and spoke to the people in the communities. We have not had one issue in that area since then. So I'd like to thank him. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ethan Anderson. And Ethan, we um, we pass that moratorium, is it?
I just wanted to speak some more on the trust and what we're looking, because we got six months of this that we got to get right. So I'm still speaking on what we got to do that over.
Okay.
Good afternoon, sir.
Yeah.
I'm here for you.
All right. So I stand here today not as a politician or a developer, but as a city, citizen of Lawrence County. Our land is more important, more than property, Lawrence. It feeds our families, sustains our livestock, and defines who we are, but that foundation is under threat. Council members, I want to remind us all this South Carolina law, Title forty six, Chapter forty five, already recognizes farming as a protected land use. Our state passed a right to farm act because it understood the agriculture is essential to our economy, our food supply, and our way of life. Yet today, outside developers buy farmland in Lawrence County and turn it into subdivisions with no zoning control. This is not just sprawl, it's conflict with the very farms that sustain us. The law makes clear that farming should not be pushed aside for convenience, yet this is exactly what happens when buy rights subdivisions carved through working farmland. This is not about stock and growth. It's about protecting the foundation of our county. Right to farm tells us agriculture is not a placeholder. It is a permanent protected use of land. If the state values farming enough to shield it from nuisance lawsuit, then Lawrence County should value it enough to create buffers, impact fees, and farmland preservation tools. If we fail to act, we risk losing the very farms this law was designed to protect. So once they are gone, no longer ordinance or money was with them when that. Let's be clear. The Brentwood development is a failure of transparency. It appeared on the county website already approved by the technical review committee back in February, yet the public barely knew. We don't know who owns it, who's building it, or whether the gimmick traffic or infrastructure study was ever done. Meanwhile, Highway fourteen, already a two-lane bottleneck filled with buses, farm equipment, and commuters, cannot handle hundreds of new homes. Approving this without infrastructure. Brentwood is not unique. Across Lawrence County, projects quietly bypass oversight. Roads like Durbin Road and Highway fourteen are already overrun. Schools are overcrowded. E M S and fire services are stretched thin, and because the county has no impact fees, developers profit while taxpayers put the bill. Wetlands are filled, trees cleared, stormwater ignored, leaving flooding, failing roads, and polluted creeks. That's why we need stronger guardrails. If a parcel has no sewer water, it should not be crammed with subdivisions and septic. Large lot minimums, two to five acres protect farmland, reduce septic failures, and keep our rural land intact. If developers want density, they should build in or near towns where utilities already exist. That's smart growth. Strengthening communities, not scattering sprawl across our farmland. Farmland, the backbone of this county, is disappearing into the hands of outside investors who don't live here and don't care about our future. To them, Lawrence is just an acre rich to carve up. To us, it's heritage, food security, and independence. Once that soil is gone, it does not come back. And with it goes our identity. Without farms, small businesses, and stewardship of the land, Lawrence becomes just another commuter suburb, a place where people sleep, not where a place where they belong. Council members, you face a defining choice. Do we sell Lawrence County piece by piece, or do we protect our farms, our water, our way of life? This is not anti-growth. This is smart growth. Growth that builds our infrastructure first. I had, I'm about to finish up. Is that right? This is not anti-growth. This is smart growth. Growth that builds our infrastructure first, protects our farmland and forests, and holds our developers accountable through impact fees invested transparently back into this county. Do not let Lawrence County become another cautionary tale. Protect our farmers, protect our land, and protect our future before it's gone forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Under old business, the first item would be approval of appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. We have an application for the District Six Agriculture Board. Mr. Filson has put forward Joey Avery to represent District Six on the ag board. All those in favor of approving Joey Avery? When the board or chairman, there's no need for it. The appointment's been made. Perfect. Are there any other? I have one this evening for my district, District Five, Brandon Hurley, to serve on the ag board. Are there any others?
Did I have a case to get Tony?
It sure did. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have one. I would like to appoint Raymond Prescott. He's the manager of Bull Hill Ranch. I would like to appoint him as the district to appointee for that work.
I'll show him like ton of application.
All right, are there any others? Thank you. Next item is the second reading of ordinance nine ninety, project sore up below. I will turn it over to county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is second reading. There's nothing changed since the first reading. This is an existing business located in the Octagon Multi-County Park here in Lawrence County. They are looking to make a estimated investment of nine point two five million dollars and create forty-three new jobs. An Octagon One Multi-County Park in the other part of Lawrence County. Can't disclose any more of that because we can't disclose any of the company.
Any questions for that? Can we take a motion to approve on second read? Second, motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven zero. Next item is new business. That is the first reading of ordinance nine ninety-one, an ordinance to amend ordinance nine twenty-six of Lawrence County. I repealing and replacing Division twelve open space residential development. This is by title home. Your motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll say, any discussion?
Tell me what you that mean by title home.
So tonight, we begin the process of reviewing, repealing, replacing ordinance nine twenty-six where the open space was. And my intention is to put that into a committee as a whole to begin the work. This starts the clock tonight on the approval process.
So you saying you gonna start a committee?
We're gonna approve first reading and then assign it to a committee.
So who's part of the committee?
I I assign the committee. It will be the committee as a whole, the entire council.
So it would be, what, it'd be seven of us?
It'd be the seven of us sitting here tonight, county councilmen.
Do you think you're personally, you want to be on the committee?
No, you're, you're on the committee. These seven people.
Aye. Which, okay.
Questions, chairman? Yes, sir.
Uh, the way this is written, just want to confirm that this only will address Division twelve and will not allow any uh, other portion of the ordinance, ordinance nine twenty-six to be addressed in this time.
We're repealing and replacing Division twelve. That does not preclude us from making any other changes, correct?
For this ordinance, ordinance nine ninety-one is only addressing Division twelve. Any other revisions to nine twenty-six, we need to come to separate events.
I also, I want to copy the ordinance nine ninety-one, so I know when I read, I want to read the whole thing, not just section Division twelve.
Nine, nine twenty-six.
Oh, you said nine ninety-one?
Nine ninety-one.
The nine ninety-one.
That's the new ordinance, nine twenty-six.
I want both of them.
They're posted. I can send you those copies.
He put me on the committee, and I'm not what I'm looking at.
Just so I can clarify, we had a working draft of nine ninety-one that the staff has been reviewing that we should have ready for pull council's approval before the committee of the whole meeting. So I'm hoping within the next week to have you that working draft. We're just putting the, we're putting up the final details on it right now.
There are nine ninety-one is what we are. I guess, I don't know if it's the right word. Redeling nine twenty-six.
Correct. Nine ninety-one be revising nine twenty-six, section twelve.
That's what we're working for in the next six months, right?
This is just for Division twelve. Uh, twenty-six lays as all.
Correct.
Division twelve is the only thing touched on nine ninety-one.
Correct.
So so no new definitions of nine twenty-six, no new changes to any appendices, anything?
I can't guarantee there'll be no new definitions. I mean, if the open space residential development needs a new definition, it will be included in that ordinance. Um, but no definitions that do not pertain to open space developments or anything like that should be changed, the ordinance nine ninety-one. And of course, you've got the right to vote on or give anything from it if you don't like it.
I'm gonna, I want to make sure we're not handcapping. What I'm worried about is we're gonna handcuff ourselves to what we need to address as we're revising this ordinance, what I'm worried about.
Yeah, this should be in there as good for this ordinance to just focus on this portion. If if we need to make any other changes in nine twenty-six, I think we need to do that as separate ordinance, and I will debate on that.
Clarifying question on that. If we get the third and final reading and this ordinance nine ninety-one passes, does that end the moratorium?
We need to do that by resolution. Any other question?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we both know that. This six-month moratorium. I want to stay in plus until we get these orders figured out, and I want it to stay in plus. This nine ninety-one, if it passes, it's still going to do away with that moratorium.
So by the third reading, if we pass nine ninety-one on the third reading, that would satisfy the reason we have a moratorium. So then we would make a decision to do a resolution to end the moratorium. This vote tonight does not end the moratorium. We have to get through three readings, public hearing, before we can remove the moratorium.
So let's see, I know, clarifying, chairman, it does not automatically, if we approve third reading on this ordinance, it does not automatically end the moratorium. We would have to have a separate vote to change the moratorium.
Anybody else have any questions? Make sure that we're a hundred percent clear on what vote. All right. Well, I'll follow question. All those in favor of approving on first reading, ordinance nine ninety-one, please raise your hand. Seven zero. We'll have county council comments. I'll start with my, on my right. Councilman Merlin. Did I catch y'all starting today?
Again, man, again, uh, thank y'all for coming once again. Um, uh, forgive me for not having a prepared uh fabricated statement, but uh, if you have anything, call me. The number's on the website. Um, email, whatever, just just holler at me.
Well, sit down again tonight because I still got something to say. Me take my times.
All right. Ms. Clark?
Um, I would say thank everybody for coming out tonight and for your opinion and so Linda, congratulations for the work that you've been doing. Your team has one of the importantly, thank you for keeping Lawrence County beautiful, if you can. Uh, thank you everyone for coming out. Have a good day.
Yes. Patterson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, echo Ms. Clark's statements. Uh, thank you, or congratulations, Greg and your team. Uh, we we have a phenomenal fire system and some great guys that answer the call when it's needed. We appreciate that. And you, Courtney, thank you for helping keep our county clean. I see several other board members in the room from that committee, and I thank y'all for y'all's volunteer time that you take to serve on that committee uh to help keep the county clean. Uh, I'm excited about all the nonprofit apps that got turned in and the process we'll do to go through those. Uh, and every time we do this, I learn more and more about uh needs in our community, and I appreciate those submissions. Uh, also do want to brag on our local college. Uh, Presbyterian is two and O on the season. They defeated um number eleven Mercer two weeks ago, which is the first time uh, since they've gone D one to defeat a nationally ranked team. So props to them. And then, of course, uh, one that feels good, we beat Furman uh, Saturday in overtime. Uh, our coach decided to go for two on the first overtime, which everybody thought was crazy. That was a make it or break it, and he he made it. So we play Erskine tonight. I'll see some Erskine fans in the room. Uh, look forward to seeing everybody on uh that'll be at that game Saturday night. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I like the same sentiments as Mr. Patterson and uh, like y'all coming to our very short meeting tonight.
Ms. Phil.
You heard from someone, ma'am, from Lawrence County Beautiful, they and all them talk about it for why they kept them up. At number one, I like I said, like the backstab would be called like I said. We had interviewed this week last week. I asked some people in the interview, what were three hundred sixty-five days mean? Nobody told me. This, all these peoples here been on the boat before me. Didn't tell me one thing. You put in an application with Lawrence County, you're owning guaranteed a three-year contract. A countermeasures job. So why should I buy a house when you know you ain't guaranteed a job for three years in Lawrence County? So we got some apartment heads. Don't even have an office in the, in the building. And y'all, I keep telling y'all all about these bad eight there, bad though there. And we can own a car lot, we show on the two fifty car lot. And I just said, y'all waste money, put money where you want to put it, but you don't put money where you need. I need water line, fire hatch. But nobody don't want to, all they want to pass me by. You always want to give everybody the problem, but people don't realize shopping Lawrence County first, do what's right for Lawrence County first, but y'all come up with money when you want to come up with money. But when people down here every day that live in Lawrence County, you don't do a thing about it. Now, all y'all worry about trying to get reelected. I'm sick and tired of all y'all want to do is get reelected. Obviously, folks do not care about getting reelected. I'm here for the people. And I don't need the money. I ain't up here for a paycheck. I'm I'm here for the people in this state and the best of the people that live in Lawrence County. All y'all wanna do is, hey, hey, everything alright. I ain't alright with how we feel. Every being I come to, if I gotta keep on calling you out, I'll keep on calling you out. Until y'all realize that, yeah, what, I told you from day one, I'm like the hands on six o'clock. I'm straight up and down. So don't fight the goddamn money back though. You wanna park in the back parking lot? You don't wanna come out here and be with these people? I'm the people person. I'm not, I'm in a business. I'm no better than nobody in this room. I'm for y'all. I'm gonna fight for you.
Hallelujah there.
That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate everybody coming tonight and, uh, the things that we are getting accomplished. It's gonna be exciting as we begin a new budget year with individuals who've never participated in the budgeting process. And so it's very enlightening and informative about how county government works and how you allocate resources and the limits on taxpayer monies that are available and the things that come into making a decision. So super excited to have these new people on board. And they'll have some great input and I'm sure we'll be better for it.
I'm glad for what we come be.
We do have one more bit of, I, uh, business this evening. That's an executive session. We will enter into executive session for the specific purpose of the discussion of negotiation incident to a proposed contract agreement for the purchase of a twelve hundred fifty gallon class eight pumper fire truck. And this came at the request of Lawrence County Fire Director. So I will entertain a motion that we adjourn to executive session. Motion, all those in favor? Six zero.
Mr. Carroll, can we have a picture?
Absolutely. We will enter into executive session at six thirty-five. It's six thirty-one, so about four minutes.
Yes, thanks for your, you have a wonderful service.